Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting, a regular meeting in Cumberland School Committee, tonight, Thursday, April 10th, 2025, at the High School Transitional Building at 7:03 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would now like to take a moment of silence in honor of Joseph L. McCourt Middle School's crossing guard, Dennis Binkowski. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Shay. Second by Mr. Bacon. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes six to zero. I'd like to state for the record that Ms. Feather is absent this evening. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes for regular meeting 3/27/2025, executive session meetings, meeting 3/27/2025, school bus inspection reports 3/28/2025, enrollment report 4/1/2025, transportation report 4/1/2025, and residency-trudency report 4/7/2025. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Ms. Strezak, the personnel announcements?
I have one appointment this evening, effective April 21st, 2025, Maria Marks, paraprofessional in the ALP program at Cumberland High School. I have one retirement after 15 years of service, effective 6/27/2025, Jamie O'Brien, district support technician. I have two resignations. The first one effective March 31st, 2025, Sarah Wanderley, paraprofessional in the ICAN classroom at McCourt, and a resignation of an employee who's currently on an unpaid leave of absence this year, effective 6/30/2025, Laura Chadburn, Spanish teacher at Cumberland High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Report out of executive session meeting. The report out of executive session meeting on 4/10/2025, reporting out of executive session votes. We had three votes this evening in executive session. The first vote carried six to zero on resolving a fee dispute with Torado Architects per the recommendation by the committee's legal counsel, including preparation of an MOA for item three in his April 6th, 2025 email. The second vote carried six to zero on issuance by committee of subpoena to NEARI Assistant Executive Director, UNISA representative for ICSI grievance 2024/2025-1. And the final vote in executive session carried six to zero on submitting a response to an Open Meetings Act complaint drafted by committee's legal counsel. A vote to seal executive, a vote to seal minutes of executive session. Do I have a vote, a motion?
Motion to.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries six to zero. Dr. Thornton, superintendent's report?
Madam Chair, a few things tonight. First, if I call up Principal Carbonic for our first item. Ms. Carbonic.
Thank you for having us here today or tonight. It is my pleasure to recognize and celebrate Chase Corbill. He is the lucky winner of the Golden Ticket. The Golden Ticket, he's a fifth grader at Ashen School. The Golden Ticket is something that's done through the Feinstein Foundation, and it's done for all the Feinstein schools. At the start of the year, all of our students get a ticket, and it looks like this. It has the number there to keep it with them for the year. And then if they get picked, every Tuesday, we get a list from Feinstein Foundation, from the Feinstein Foundation with five names. If they get selected, they win $5,000 that will go towards the school, $500 that they can donate to a charity of their choice. And then Chase got a nice box with some treats for himself that he's actually using. One of them, he's wearing, probably wearing his sweatshirt from the Feinstein Foundation. The charity that he picked for this, for winning this is the Friends of Kids with Cancer Organization, where he's donated the money, the $500 that he received to them. When you think about the purpose of the foundation, Feinstein Foundation is all about kindness, promoting our kids to be kind to each other, ending hunger, helping one another. And when I saw Chase's name come up and he got picked a couple of weeks ago, I could not more, be more proud and happy for him because, in all honesty, he really represents the foundation well in our school. He embodies all those traits. He is kind and thoughtful. He will be the first one to drop things, to go help others. And so I was very proud of him because he will make a difference in this world, and that's what the foundation's all about. Feinstein is always promoting that we're going to make sure that this world will leave it better than the way we found it, that we take care of each other. And I truly believe that Chase is doing that and will continue to do that. So congratulations to Chase for being the winner for us, for the school, and for the foundation. Here's your ticket.
All right. Next up, if I can call up the McCourt admin team. Ms. Doris, Ms. Holman, here to talk about the happenings over at McCourt.
Good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening, and I would like to take a moment to report out on two recent events that have deeply impacted and uplifted the McCourt Middle School community. I'll keep my composure. First, we held a heartfelt outdoor ceremony in honor of Dennis Binkowski, or as the kids knew him, Mr. Denny. He was our beloved crossing guard who served on Highland Ave for the past three years. Mr. Denny was more than just a gentleman at the crosswalk. He was a daily source of warmth, humor, and kindness. His impact on our students did not go unnoticed. Nearly every day, even well after dismissal, you could find a student still chatting with Denny on the corner, sharing stories about their day. He listened, he encouraged, and truly cared. Rain or shine, and especially in the rain, Denny was the ray of sun who greeted us every day with a wave and a smile as even the staff drove by him. In collaboration with Denny's family, we had the opportunity to give him one more final tribute that was both simple yet profound. Students and staff lined both sides of Highland Avenue to wave to Denny one last time as he made his final pass by McCourt. It was a powerful moment, one that captured just how much he meant to all of us and how deeply he will be missed. And I want to emphasize how proud we were of our students. They stood respectfully, many with their hands over their hearts, fully present in the moment. Their behavior reflected the true depth of their connection to Denny, and it reminded us that when we model love and respect, our students rise to meet it with grace and maturity. Switching gears, in the spirit of coming together, we also were able to celebrate the Rock the Rycast promotion at McCourt. This week, we started our Rycast ELA sessions, and this was our building initiative to build excitement and motivation around state testing to lift their spirits and boost their confidence. With motivational messages, balloon arches, fun raffles at the end of the testing day today, we made an effort to truly make the students feel special and with the involvement of our families. To kick off the Rycast week, we opened the school this past Sunday and again on Monday afternoon, inviting all families to come in and write personal messages of encouragement to their children. The response was definitely overwhelming. Almost 100 parents and guardians came to write heartfelt notes lining all the halls with positivity and love. For families that weren't able to come in person, they did flood my email box with all their messages, so Tuesday morning I was running around and making sure their messages were seen. By Tuesday morning, every hallway again was lined with words of encouragement, creating a warmth and uplifting atmosphere for these students to truly rock that Rycast. With the combined effort of our staff, families, and students, they transformed what could be a stressful experience into something that was hopeful and empowering. Our students felt the support all around them, and they definitely responded with focus, resilience, and pride, so much so that we had to pivot quite a few times during lunch. With these two events, though very different in nature, both showcase the power of community. Whether we're honoring the life of someone who gave so much to our school or wrapping our students in encouragement as they face academic milestones, McCourt continues to be a place where care, connection, and pride shine through, and Christine and I could not be more proud to be here to share this with you. Thank you.
And last but not least, let's talk about community school. This is our fourth renovation, as you know. We are rounding the corner. I've seen this movie before, so now we're getting to the point where we're seeing it all put together. This is one of the common areas, all the first coat of paint is in, all the wallboards up here on this piece. Next up, next week during vacation week, flooring is going in. We had the above ceiling inspection done, very exciting. Now we can flood the ceilings with the ceiling tiles. This is what part of the old basement cleft looked like. Now it's a classroom space over here. Here's a typical classroom right now, just the ceiling tiles came in and the first coat of paint. The cabinetry is in all the classrooms. The bathrooms don't look like much, but now that's ready to receive the flooring next week and all the toilets, et cetera. Over here, the gym was stripped this week. The flooring's been stripped. In there, we're getting new ceilings, new flooring, new basketball hoops. This heater system over here is antiquated, and kids would kind of bump into that. Not wonderful. That all goes away. That comes out. It's a lot of work happening in the gym. Here is the main office. As you come in, now we have the man trap, if you will, is being kind of put in. Here's the window for the receptionist. That's underway. Flooring, once again, being stripped. This is a view in the office suite. You walk into like a guidance area, you can see the look in the hallway. That's all brand new. Over here, just upstairs, part of the 1920s wing at community school. That's all looking, looking nice. Over here, doesn't look like much. That's a new elevator shaft. It's just two floors and part of the community, but it goes up just two floors there. Over here, we're problem solving. The front of the community has always had a water problem. Water kind of settles there. It's an old dry well from probably decades ago right here. We're going to open that up, take that out, and put a larger dry well and solve that problem. We can't leave it as a flood issue, so that's going to, going to happen shortly. So yeah, essentially, next week at community, I would just say what we're going to see is some windows come out. We're doing it during vacation week as some of the window caulking is hot, so that comes out. Windows are en route. That'll look nice when those go in. Once again, the flooring is coming in, so I'd say probably middle of May, if you folks want to go for a walk at community, you'd see a lot. You'd see, you know, the walls, the flooring, the ceiling, windows, all of that happening in May. So we are on schedule, and it looks quite good. Happy to answer any questions on community.
Any questions to Dr. Thornton?
Just while I have you, the playground at Cumberland Hill was demoed last week, in case you drove by, so that's also underway.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we have any comments from the public? No comments from the public? Reports of standing committees? Fiscal management subcommittee, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The fiscal subcommittee did meet earlier this evening. We do have six resolutions to discuss a little bit later in the agenda, and we also had payment of the bills.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next is policy and procedures subcommittee update. Ms. Feather is not in attendance this evening. Achievement and communications subcommittee update, Ms. Shay?
Yep, we actually met yesterday, and we discussed the possibility of a new schedule model at the high school that would offer more opportunities for juniors and seniors in the next few years.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shay. District health and wellness subcommittee update, Ms. Shay?
Yep, we actually met this evening earlier. We had Kendra Gay from the Rhode Island School Recycling Project. She provided a preview of pretty much what she presented at the last open meeting here on March 27th, and she did highlight that out of the 50 participating, excuse me, schools in Rhode Island, Cumberland Hill was the first to successfully reduce its waste. We had Frank from Chart Wells come in, discuss some initiatives for the next school year, proposing some special event days at each building, a waffle day, an omelet day. And then we also reviewed some of the necessary updates and corrections that are needed for the district's health and wellness policy, so we're going to begin making changes to that and submitting that for submission.
Thank you very much. New business. Discussion and our vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2024-2025 school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Ms. Goldstein. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discussion and our vote on an overnight field trip request. Denise Provost, Skills USA Nationals, Atlanta, Georgia, June 22nd through the 28th. Ms. Provost?
Good evening. How are you tonight? Okay, so I'm Ms. Provost, Denise Provost, Ms. Provost, as the kids call me, obviously. I'm a second-year business teacher here at Cumberland High School, and also my second year being one of the coordinators alongside Carol Cadosso. And this, last year, we started with three students because we were kind of just like diving in kind of late with the whole Skills USA process, and we had three students, they didn't place, but we wanted to obviously grow it so we had a little more knowledge of what Skills USA was all about. So this year, we recruited like 23 students, and thankfully, we had our entrepreneurship team, which consists of Zach Rossi, Emma Cruz, Catalina Caparro, and Matt Fontaine Caparro. They won gold. So with me and Mrs. Cadosso being only second years with Skills, we were very proud of them for the hard work that they did all year. So they get the gold medal, and with that, they also get to present not only Rhode Island but coming to high school at the Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia this June. I believe it's, they leave June 22nd and they come back on the 27th. And our silver medalist is Dylan Scucara. He won, and I excuse the pronunciation, extrem, oh my God, extreme poronas, I can't even say it, extreme porinias, speaking. It's like such a big word, I'm sorry. I even practiced it too, and I forgot. He got silver, okay? Well, I got notified tonight, I had a meeting with the director of Skills USA, and I got notified that the gold medalist who won is not going to go, so because of that, he gets to go as the gold medalist representing Rhode Island and also Cumberland High School. So what we're looking for is approval, number one, for this field trip. It is, you know, a little bit expensive, but we are really on track to fundraise a lot of money for the students so they can go. We've only had one week of knowing that they're going to the Nationals, and the kids just like took off running, and they actually got two donations from businesses, a $500 one and a $240 donation, and we have a lot of people interested in the fundraising I'm having in a couple of weeks at Topgolf. So if you have any golfers, let me know.
Any questions?
Can you speak to the ratio? How many kids are going total? How many chaperones?
Five students going, so Mrs. Cadosso is going to be the chaperone for this event, for this tournament.
Any other, Ms. Smith? Do you have a question? Oh, sorry, no.
We have the same question, I'll let her do it.
Okay, Ms. Goldstein?
I just had actually two questions, but on the form, there is something for insurance and something for medical arrangements, and those are not checked off, so I was wondering if we could get a little information about the two items. It's page three.
and then two down, it's medical arrangements.
I apologize, I don't think I have that form with me. I took the, so if you can just show me that, I can look at that. I wonder if, okay, I'm sorry, what was your question again with this?
I just was looking for some, just clarification on, they're not checked off, so I just was wondering about the insurance piece and also if there were medical arrangements, it looks like it says provisions for emergency medical care in the event of illness or accident must be included.
Can I get back to you on that? Is that okay?
I'd say typically, it's a school-sponsored trip, would have parents make arrangements with the chaperones if my child has any allergies, any medications, that kind of thing. We can certainly, I'll give you correspondence on that tomorrow on what the detail is on that.
I can email the director of Skills USA for more clarification on the process.
Can we still vote on it if we need to get those answers first? Sorry.
Couple of things, I mean, you guys have a policy on field trips and it needs to be, if you vote to, so for those who are new and for those who are not new to the committee, the Rhode Island Department of Education has made it very clear that if a school committee approves a field trip, then the school committee ultimately would be quote-unquote "on the hook for the payment." So we all grew up, I grew up, in a time period where parents paid for things, and that is not something that is generally permitted anymore. So there's fundraising that is done, and the challenge with the fundraising can be, to a certain extent, that it can come across as pay-to-play, like the trip is $1,000 a person. Oh, it's great that Johnny's parents paid $1,000 in a fundraiser. I'm not suggesting that in this situation in any way, but that, that is an issue. But you need to understand that if you authorize it, ultimately, the school committee, the school department, would have to pay for it if there isn't adequate fundraising done. I'm sure there will be. It will all go beautifully and swimmingly, but given that it's not till June, if the paperwork isn't complete, I would recommend that you have the folks come back when that stuff is complete so that you can vote on something that you know is ready to go, but that's my, you don't have to take my recommendation, but that's what I think.
Is this a time-sensitive? Okay, what is the date, what is, I'm sorry, when do you need?
The students are leaving, here to leave, June 22nd.
When do you have to notify Skills USA?
Yep, deposit would need to be made by May 1st, and I believe payment for the flights is on the 16th of May or 15th.
So Madam Chair, if I could, looking at the forms that were submitted to us, the due dates and the payments, April 16th is the registration form and deposit.
The registration forms, but we got a notification today that May 16th or 15th, I forgot what Dylan said was going to be the airline deposit. That's the information I got from one of the students and also from the Skills USA director today.
So the Skills USA forms or the document that they have in here have different dates on what they provided to us in writing. So I don't know, like, what chances do we take? We don't want them to lose an opportunity, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we have all the information.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
I don't have any, I mean, you can approve it, subject to the information being completed. You can not take any action, you do, you know, it's up to you guys. And you do have a meeting at the end of April, so, you know, the folks could run for luck with this, who are doing this, and make a deposit, and then come back to the committee. I mean, there's all sorts of ways to handle it.
Mr. Dean? I was texting Dylan, he's my godson, but he said May 2nd for the flight deposit and May 16th for the registration. Yeah, yeah. May.
But May 2nd is the airline.
And you said April 16th is the other date?
May 16th.
So April 16th is not?
That's the registration form and deposit.
Registration, May 16th, yeah.
He's saying May and April.
It is, so it's.
How close are you to the, to the goal for the, for the funding?
Well, we, our first fundraiser was going to be on the 27th.
What's the, the amount? Do you have a roundabout number for the, what is going to cost?
About 6,500, 7,000. So, and we're on track to, with all the people that are interested in going, and if it, you know, pans out that way, we're tracked to probably make $4,000 from that on top of the donation. So I'm thinking we're going to get a good chunk of it by the 27th.
So our option is to table it, vote on it.
Say you can take no action, you can vote it up, you can vote it down, you can vote it up conditionally, you can, there, there.
Ms. Goldstein? That was my question. Could we, could we vote on it conditionally pending the two pieces of information that are left off of the application, the insurance and the medical arrangements? Bad information?
Yes, of course, and you could also vote it, and I'm not, I hate to sound like the Grinch, but you could also vote it conditional upon the organization completing their fundraising on it. And then if you wanted to end up cutting a check as a school committee, I'm not advising it, I know we're in budget season, obviously, you could always change that vote down the road if they're not able to meet their goal and they end up with $6,274, and it's $6,275 to go, or something like that. Does that make sense? You can condition it on everything, you can do all that stuff. You're the committee.
Okay. So if we want to do it conditionally, could I offer the condition? Does someone else have to offer it?
I think if, I could suggest a motion that somebody could make, which was, I move to approve, subject to completion of the information on the form that Ms. Goldstein referenced, and subject to full fund, complete fundraising by those involved to fund the trip. That would be a way that you could do it for now. I, I don't, I, I'm always very uncomfortable making a motion because I'm not on the committee, but that is something that you could do.
Do I have a motion? No. Okay. Do I have a motion to vote on the overnight field trip request on the, based on the conditions of the two documents Ms. Goldstein's referenced, I think it's within medical arrangements and insurance, as well as fundraising to meet the goal for the field trip?
I make a motion.
Mr. Dean? Second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero.
I'll get this information to you tomorrow.
Thank you so much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Discussion, discussion and our vote on recommendation to award the electrical switchgear pre-purchase package to Consigly Construction for the new BF Norton School, and I think we have a representative from Colliers and Consigly, Consigly is that correct?
Yes, hi. My name is Deborah Faith, I'm here from Colliers Project Leaders, and we are in, we support the recommended motion that the committee award the RTA 01, the new BF Norton Elementary School project electrical switchgear pre-purchase package for a total of $252,939 to Consigly Construction Incorporated of Milford, Mass. And Suzette Joseph is here from Consigly if you have any questions.
Okay, hello. So the total amount that we are requesting to be approved is $252,000 in, $252,939,000. Are there any questions about the switchgear package? Are there any questions about the switchgear package?
Madam Chair, can you explain why we have to go about early for switchgear?
Oh, yes, of course. So the current lead time for switchgears are between 40 to 52 weeks, months, I'm sorry. And so we're projecting that we would have the switchgear in August 2026. So it'll be delivered directly to the site and installed then. We're asking to pre-purchase it so that we have it readily available on time during the course of construction.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Smith?
I just want to confirm too, this is part of the entire bond package anyways. It's something that would have been included with the funding, this is just, we're funding a little bit earlier than perhaps where it would be, just so that we have the time to get delivery.
Yes, that is correct. So this cost will be included in our GMP.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, can I have a motion on recommendation to award the electrical switchgear pre-purchase package to Consigli Construction? Thank you. Motion by Mr. Bacon?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. The next is a discussion and/or vote on recommendation to award the Alborg construction for Cumberland High School roof replacement, phase one?
Yes, hi. Again, Colliers Project Leaders recommends that the committee award RTA 01 Cumberland High School roof, phase one, for a total of $393,779 to Alborg Construction Corporation of Warwick Island. And Megan Hunt is here from Alborg Construction Corporation.
Good evening, everybody. Are there any questions regarding the phase one roof? And just to clarify, the phase one roof, is the roof directly over the auditorium, the two-level roof?
Any questions? Okay. Can I have a motion and vote, recommendation to award to Alborg Construction for Cumberland High School roof replacement, phase one? Motion by Mr. Bacon? Second by Ms. Smith, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, you guys are going to have a nice dry auditorium.
Discussion and/or vote to approve purchasing resolutions, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So during the fiscal Subcommittee meeting this evening, we did go and review six resolutions, and we did vote on those, and all six of those passed three to zero. I'm going to take those and I'm going to manage them separate from one of the other ones that's on here, number eight. And if you've noticed, there's nothing under number four, so it's really just one, two, three, five, six, and seven that we're going to address in this first vote. So they are the SCPR 03 2025 2022, sorry, it's the amended. Then we have SCPR 03 2025-24, and that was the one that was tabled from the last meeting. And the rest of them are the 2025-28 through 31. And again, all six of those were discussed and voted on in fiscal Subcommittee and did pass three to zero, and I would move passage of all six of those.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We have a motion by Ms. Smith to pass SCPR 03 2025 22 as amended, SCPR 03 2025 24 that was tabled, and SCP, SCPR 04 2025 2028 through 31. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Ms. Smith?
Yes, and the last resolution that we have is for the full committee, we did not discuss this in fiscal, we have put this out to the full committee, and it is SCPR 04 2025-32. It is the high school roof, phase one, construction drawing, payment for Terrado Architects. And I would move passage on this one, I would make a motion to move passage.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I have a motion by Ms. Smith to pass SC-PR-04-2025-32 on the high school roof, phase one, construction drawings, Terrado Architects. Second? Second by Mr. Dean. Discussion, all in favor? Any retract? That passes six to zero. Ms. Smith, discussion and/or vote to approve payment of bills?
Yes, we do have payment of the bills this evening. This did pass fiscal Subcommittee three to zero. Payment of the bills, just to make a little note here, it was $1,482,628 and 20 cents. However, $179,596.14 was approved previously in our last meeting, and that was the chartwell and the new readjustment of how we're managing them. So the total payment of the bills for approval tonight is $1,303,32.06, and I would request passage.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith makes a motion to pass payment of the bills in the amount of $1,303,32.06. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Dr. Thornton, do we have to go into executive session?
No, we don't.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Bacon?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? That passes six to zero. We adjourn the meeting tonight, April 10th, at 7:39 PM.